I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We do have a quorum, we do need to adopt the agenda. The only addition that I'd like to throw in here, just since we never have anything on there in the first place, is I'd like to add, under discussion, Baco is having a regional meeting on September 18th. I'd like to talk about that just for a couple of minutes. Anybody else have anything we need to add?
Mr. Chairman, just point of privilege, one of the things we did amend the agenda since the packet was published on Friday, there was an additional fireworks permit that came in, that is reflected as item... What is it, 7B for the high school football season? As well as Mr. McCowen from PEC had commented on the Virginia Energy Audit that you will have on your agenda. We did include that comment in the packet as well.
Anybody else have anything we need to add to the agenda? What would you like to do?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signature of five percent saying aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. Public comment. Public comment. This is quite the elite group. We've got campaigning people, we've got bankers, lawyers, and HR. And Steve, welcome, Steve. Any public comment? We see you, Chuck. Welcome, Gracie. Anybody online, Federico? Excellent, we're staying true to form. Consent agenda, we've got minutes from 8:06, 8:12, and 8:12, the town hall. We also have supplemental appropriation number four for $12,608.77. We've got supplemental appropriation number five, which is the EOC 911 grant for 200... or for a total of $350K. And then supplemental appropriation number six, which is enter departmental for $23,480, eighty, I think. Anybody have questions, comments, thoughts? What would you like to do with consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signature of five percent saying aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. No special appearances, no public hearings. Davenport Presentation. Kyle, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, nice to see everybody. We'll see if this is...is this on?
Yes.
Is that working? Very good?
And Kim has your slides, Kyle, so whenever you want to advance, just let her know, she'll take care of it.
Very good. Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, nice to see you, as always. What Gracie just handed out is the exact same thing, it's up on the screens, we've just given you a hard copy, you can make notes or whatever on it. But what we really have this evening is the culmination of some work that we've collectively been doing, obviously, if you as a board, with your staff, with Gracie and I, over really much of the calendar year so far, it's gone quickly. But that process is to go identify capital projects within your adopted CIP, which you've obviously done by virtue of your budget this spring, and basically go find financing for those projects, which is really where we are right now. You may recall, a little bit of background, in the colder months, went through a variety of projects, you obviously scrubbed those as a board, came down to your priorities as a county. And what we've done during the summertime is we've gone out in line with that plan that we laid out during the spring to go competitively bid what is basically about $4 million of financing to local banking institutions, regional and national banking institutions. Competitive process, they've gone through all of that, run that through, obviously, county administrator and finance director, and really have the results and a recommendation for you this evening. So I'll give you a little bit of a color there, let Gracie explain a bit of it, and then talk about next steps, and certainly answer any questions that you have. But as you look at the screen there at the top, again, just a little bit of refresher, the idea here was to get flexible interim financing. And so the projects that are being financed are of a variety of different things. There's some school renovations, there's some vehicles, there's some buses, a bit of a variety of different projects. They're all going to have different timing, they're all in a different place in terms of their planning stages. And so the idea was, let's get very flexible financing that would allow you as a county, you as a board, over the next two fiscal years, there's a basic cover FY '26 and FY '27, aggregate that amount of dollars, that's an estimate, and go ahead and get those in hand now, basically the beginning of FY '26, and give you as a county all of FY '26, all of FY '27. Do work your way through those projects, do the renovations, pay the vehicles, so forth and so on. So flexible interim financing, that's what this is, all, you know, in accordance with the plan that we laid out during the springtime. Bottom of the page there, again, we've gone through that competitive bidding process. We've gotten four very good bids back, you can see them at the bottom there. It's Atlantic Union, it's Huntington, it's Truist, and it's Webster Bank. So four very good bids. My recommendation to you, I'm going to kind of cut straight to the chase and let Gracie explain why, is Webster Bank. They were the same bank that provided the financing for the 2020 loan, which was a series of loans that we did just a couple of years ago. And so that really is going to be a recommendation. I'll let Gracie explain a little bit why that is. They're very much aligned with the plan that we laid out in the spring. So, Gracie, why don't you jump in and explain a little bit of that?
So, as Kyle mentioned, we're recommending Webster Bank for a combination of reasons. If you look up at the top of the page, the first four reasons, Webster Bank provides the lowest fixed interest rate. That also is in line with the required collateral structure that we requested from the banks, and it provides very flexible prepayment provisions.
A couple nuances there, as Gracie just mentioned, in terms of Webster being lowest fixed interest rate, lines with everything we need to do, very flexible prepayment. The other banks that could have been in, you see at the bottom of the page there, just for reference, Atlantic Union, very good, basically a local bank nowadays, had a nice interest rate, but their collateral provisions didn't work for what you needed to do. And so for that reason, they weren't the recommendation and the winner in that way, but certainly a very good bank. We think very highly of them. Huntington had a higher interest rate, not as flexible prepayment provision, so that kind of pushed them out of the winning chair, if you will. And then Truist was also less flexible in the prepayment, higher interest rate. So basically Webster is the best combination of those things, meaning interest rate, collateral that does what we needed to do, gives us the flexibility to pay it off sooner rather than later without any penalties, and it's obviously a fixed interest rate for the whole term of the loan. Gracie, why don't you jump in on the next page there?
So, this page looks at the debt service of column B, which is what we planned for at 5% and what you all budgeted for in your FY '26 budget. And then column C, which is the Webster Bank proposal, which is what we are recommending. And that is at a 3.73% interest rate. So, bottom line, going with the Webster Bank proposal, we'll end up saving the county about $135,000, which is great and much lower than what we had budgeted for.
We go to the next page, and so 3.73 is the interest rate on the loan. And again, that's fixed for the whole time period. The corollary to that is we're going to be able to turn around and reinvest those dollars in a state program called SNAP, same program we've used in the past, widely used across the state, run by the state treasurer. The current rate on that SNAP program is about a 4.43. So we're going to borrow at a 3.73, take those dollars, put them in the bank, so to speak, in the SNAP program, reinvest it at a 4.43. The way the tax code works, we may not be able to keep all of those earnings over and above the interest rate, not really allowed to make money on it, but we are at a minimum going to be able to cover the interest cost on the loan. So kind of the two sides of the equation is the borrowing costs, obviously 3.73 fixed to afford and so on. Being able to turn around and reinvest it at a 4.43 is very, very favorable and in line with everything that you'd need to do from a tax code perspective. We'll go one more page in terms of our next steps, and then answer any questions that you have. So in terms of process, obviously here this evening, there's a resolution that's prepared by Sands Anderson, who is your bond counsel, with some associated documents. I think they may be on their way. If not, I'll do what I can to answer those types of questions. But that resolution is the only action that we need of the board supervisors that would allow this process to continue forward. The one other body that would need to approve this, which is the same as we did in 2020, is the IDA. We've got that meeting set for their approval next week on the 3rd in the afternoon. With those two actions, we just work with your staff, work with the bank, work with legal counsel to get this all closed on or about September 12th, really in a couple of weeks. You have those dollars, interest rate is locked in, put the money into the bank, and you're off and running doing the various projects. So with that, I'll pause. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, answer any questions you may have, or elaborate on anything that Mr. Weekly or others may want.
Let's...I know Cardi's got questions, I assume there's other questions up here. Jonathan, Henon, you'll want to start.
Sure, I definitely want to pull in Ms. Warren, she's done a lot of...she's probably been the main county voice on this. I just wanted to...I'd say reiterate, because I don't know if you covered it, this would be interest only, and it would have to be termed out. I think the kind of recommendation would be around the 2028 timeframe?
Yeah, so the final maturity would be in the spring of 2028. So you have all of FY '26, all of FY '27, and the vast majority of FY 2028. Basically getting into that 28, meaning fiscal year budget process before you have to term it out or tail.
All right, thank you. And I just defer to Ms. Warren, Mr. Chairman, for any comments or things she may have.
Yes, ma'am. Henon, you have anything? All right, Cardi, you want to start?
Okay, so, let's...if you would go to the resolution.
Okay.
It's on page 196 of...okay, how you got it? 196 of my package. Just...okay, go down to the number four. Okay, number four says, that first sentence, in the middle says, "With a term maturing no later than December 31st, 2028." Okay, so keep that number...December 31st, 2028. Now go down to the specimen IDA bond, which is on page 260. And right at the top of that says maturity date, May 1st, 2028.
Yep.
That's...so that's two different dates in my simple mind, so I don't know what the relevance of that is. And the other question on that same page says, principal amount, $2 million, but it's got $4,160,000 in parentheses. So that's my questions.
And I would add to that, it would just struck my eye, Mr. Yow's interest rate as well, at 3.91.
Oh, yeah, 3.91.
Yeah, so I think a couple, I think Paul Jacobson with Sands Anderson just walked in, but I'll jump in, Paul. So the question was...
Two different maturity dates.
Yep. And so the resolution sets an outside parameter, so it can't be any more than that. So it can't be any longer than December 31st of 2028.
Okay.
The same with the interest rate, can't be any higher than X, and so forth and so on. So that's what that resolution is doing, is setting the maximum maturity date. The specimen bond, which at this point is just a specimen, it will need to be revised to make it final. We'll have the final specifics in it. You correctly, Mr. Yow, pointed out a couple of things that need to be corrected in it.
Okay.
Which is the principal amount, $4,160,000 is correct, the verbiage is not, so that'll need to be updated. The interest rate will need to be updated. The final maturity is correct, there could be made. So your eagle eyes have caught a couple of things that will need to be amended before the final documents are signed, certainly. But the resolution basically provides enough parameters that that can all be cleaned up prior to finalization.
Okay, and just for my clarity, so we're paying interest only through 2028, is that right, Jennifer? And then that's when, then the term of paying off the principal and ongoing interest would be, I don't know, negotiated then, or set then? What's the payout period for the principal?
That's right. Yeah, so that's when we'd refinance to a term, it would be up to you as a board, or whatever the board is at the time. I think we'd plan that around about 15 years, is the idea. But you really have the flexibility to kind of take that.
Yeah, based on where our budgets are at that time.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. If we go a little shorter, that'd be great, to get some vehicles and things in here, but we've got some more useful life in it. So the idea was to give enough flexibility to understand where the budgets are, how things are looking at that point, and be able to make that determination at that point.
Got it. Thank you. That's it. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Who else has questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, and I know you said this, but in one ear and not the other, but if we were to... if, let's assume that things go really well for us financially, can we start paying this back before the December 31st, 2028?
You can't.
Okay, thank you.
So as soon as...the only non lockout period is from now until next spring. So between now and like next May, you can't practically speaking pay it, but after that time period, you can pay it sooner.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got a quick question.
Please.
So I'm new here, so were you here for the 2020 loan?
Yes.
With Webster. How did...what was that total, if you remember, approximately? And did we pay it off early? Did we spread it out?
No, we paid it off.
Are we still paying it?
Yeah, you're still paying it. That's effectively the only loan you have outstanding. There's a couple different components to this. That was the aggregate of the loans at the time.
Because it was far from...
And what that did is it refinanced existing debt back in 2020, I recall, where the rates were very, very low, and it added some new money to do capital projects. Like, I believe this building was refurbished with that loan. And so it's not paid off yet, but it's set up much like a mortgage. And so the types of things that you're financing, doing this, tend to be projects that have long, long lives. And so if you're paying principal and interest on that particular loan each and every year, paying that principal balance down, fixed installment. So look at that loan from back in 2020. It looks very much like a mortgage, it's basically level payments you're making each and every year, you're paying the principal down on it.
Was it interest only first, and then we termed it out, or?
No, that one I believe was full principal, just from kind of the commencement of it.
So just a follow-up question, so SNAP, if we invest this money in the SNAP funds, what happens if those take a dive? And we have all this money in it? You know, or are we guaranteed?
Not guaranteed, no. But what it is, is SNAP is a program, it's run by the state treasurer. It basically operates kind of like a money market, so it's overnight liquid funds. You are getting that interest rate on a daily basis. It does fluctuate with the markets on a day-to-day basis. It's been kind of hanging in at around 4.4, 4.5, you know, on a daily basis. So if in your personal life, maybe you've got a savings account, or maybe a money market, it's really analogous to a money market. So it's run, again, by the state treasurer to make sure that if you put a dollar in, you get a dollar back out, and on top of that, you get the interest earnings to go with it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Warren?
Just give a little more context onto those from back in 2020. We had 2020 A, B, and C, and the interest rate's 2.375. So we had a really, a really good interest rate on that, just for educational purposes, for those who aren't aware of that. And it looked like for 2020, let me see when they term out, I have my schedule right here. I know on the B I have open, that one is 2033, I believe. So like I said, we are paying principal and interest payments annually, but it is 2.375 interest. And if you're interested, I'm happy to send a breakdown of those three, but it's a very good interest rate, and it is something that we pay consistently every year. And the only thing I wanted to mention is, looking at Atlantic Union versus Webster, yes, Atlantic Union, like we mentioned, had a slightly lower rate, but the collateral was the big issue. And I think it would be worth mentioning what their collateral request was, just so you're aware of why we didn't choose them. I would like for you, if you don't mind, Kyle, to explain a little bit about what Atlantic was asking us to do, because it is a big...I believe it was definitely a no... it was a showstopper for us on the collateral side.
Yeah, so... So the way this loan is structured is basically we're putting a lien on some county facilities, kind of the mortgage, to secure the loan, which is very commonplace in terms of how these financings are done. What Atlantic Union wanted was, they didn't want the real estate, which is what we had asked for in the way these loans are structured. What they wanted was for you to put some dollars in an account with them to the tune of about $6.5 million, and maintain that balance basically throughout the entire term of the loan. And so it was basically going to tie your hands in terms of both the operational side of things as well as the capital side of things. So it wasn't what we asked for and how these loans are structured. And on top of that, the sort of inner co-mingling, if you will, of what your regular county operating dollars with these loan dollars, and kind of, you know, confounding those two together. Just, we didn't think operationally even was a good idea, let alone the fact that it wasn't the legal structure that sort of the way these are done.
Got it. Two questions. So Webster, where are they located, the bank?
Webster is...they are located in New York, but they bid very, very frequently across the country. They view local government loans like these as being very, very high quality. And so the branch that bids on these, that is in Charlotte. And so they really operate nationally.
And what bank do we use as a county? So they want money on top of what we already keep with them?
All right, thanks.
All right, other questions, comments on this?
Yeah, I got, I guess, I got two more. So you're talking about the lien on county properties. I've...probably, I don't know, two or three, at least three of these different documents, there are exhibits that say, "Property description, county administration facilities as herein after described." And I've never seen the "herein after described." I mean, I was expecting to see a specific building or something, but that was the...I'm on page 228. Kim, like that. As herein after described, and I never did find...
Are they identical?
To find that.
You're totally right about that, Mr. Yow. So my understanding, it's going to be 410 and 414 are going to be the ones, use both basically by their...
I kind of figured that, but because of the way it says administration facility, but...so that will show up at somewhere, at some point.
It better.
Okay. Okay.
Definitely will, Mr. Vice Chairman. I believe that is part of the bond documents. I know Mr. Bausch has sent email over to Mr. Wright and myself, it's kind of a certification form, and asking for some deed information, so certainly I expect that to be more clarified.
I mean, I just assumed, put the arcade building in there, you know, but never mind.
We still don't want to default, and I know the love for arcade, but...
The entire theory there is how the banks look at these, most every bank, they like the essential nature of it. Practically speaking, you're going to repay this loan, it's never going to be issued. But it provides them, from a bank regulator's standpoint, the ability to say, we've got some collateral behind it, that it then lends a lower interest rate.
All right, one more question, which Judd kind of sparked this question for me. So how did Davenport go about getting the RFP out? How did those four end up responding? Did, I mean, you have a number of people that you would send to RFP to already from your experience, or?
Yeah, so we've got, we probably do, I would say, a couple hundred of these a year. And so we've got a very, very large list of banks that we try to basically canvas anybody and everybody who had any interest whatsoever.
So you shotgun this thing out to those, okay?
And then we follow up with the banks, we talk to the banks to make sure they know it's there, and answer any questions that they have. And so it's A, a very large list, and B, we make sure we do some follow-up. You know, see who's interested, what they need, what they may want. We want to make sure it's all bid in a very methodical manner. We do a fair amount of follow-up conversations.
Okay. Swear, that's it.
There you go. I know you're...sorry, we couldn't put up a school on the floodplain, it's collateral.
Oh, yeah.
All right, what else you have, Kyle, before we go to the resolution?
That's it, unless there's any other questions.
Anybody else have anything they want to add? I mean, it looks like this has been very well vetted across the board. Thank you for all y'all's work, Mr. Warren, certainly. What would you all like to do with Resolution 2025-20?
Yeah, well, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-20.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signature of five percent saying aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. Thank you, Kyle.
Thanks.
We'll see you here in a couple of weeks. Yep. All right.
Okay, Kyle, I'm sorry. So are you there for the IDA meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Steve, do you have...that...sorry, Steve, do you have anything to add, or questions, or anything on this?
Not this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, Brian, talk to us about Hoover Ridge Maintenance Barn.
All right, Mr. Chairman, as everybody's aware, last January, we had a snow event that collapsed the Red Barn at the Hoover Ridge Park facilities, pretty much rendering most of our equipment homeless. Since then, it's been outside, closed to weather, so on and so forth. Been working pretty diligently since probably March, trying to figure out what to do with this. On August 12th, well, actually, August 12th, we, our RFP process came to an end, where we had to have responses back. We received one response from TAFT Construction for $849,000. So that's quite a bit of money, obviously. It's our recommendation to reject that bid. I've been doing quite a bit of research over the last week, and have found steel buildings ranging between... the cheapest one I saw was $92,000 to $115,000. The general thought on this to assemble these buildings is around $10 a square foot, high-end. So you're looking about $180,000, you can have one of these things installed on a pad. Now, the big question mark now is what is that concrete pad going to cost us? So we're working towards this. We think the best way to do this is to piecemeal it at this point. Go out on another RFP for the building, and then follow that up with an RFP for the pad once we have the building secured and the specs designed for that particular building. Not sure why the big bid, I can't speak to that. All I can speak to is my research that I've done over the last week. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. I would say that we certainly are all together on rejecting the $850,000 maintenance shed price tag that TAFT has put on this, and that we have paid for, which is super...$849,000, excuse me, yes, sir. Just ridiculous. Going forward with Brian's path, I think, is a good one. We can accomplish this. We do have the bandwidth to do a pretty simple building. We should be able to get this thing going. My only concern earlier was whether or not we'd be able to mobilize and get concrete in the ground, hopefully sometime early October, and then we could go from there and get the barn built on.
By somewhere.
Hopefully before the end of the year. That's just what it is.
Jonathan and I are going to do some research to see how quickly we can turn over an RFP. Putting it out through state networks, I'm not sure the right people are going to see it. So I think we need to do some legwork here and make sure the right people see it. And once we go on RFP, certainly, we have the dates when we have to get responses back when it's going to close. We're going to hold tight to that, to follow our procurement policies. But at the same time, try to reach out a little shotgun, is Mr. Yow.
It's a very Madison way of saying things.
Well, I was just trying to follow suit. Most of these companies, and Brian discussed about this, you buy the packages from. It'd be nice to have the foundation plan upfront, but, you know, if you do business with them, you get that.
So that will help you kind of know those specs. But definitely can do this in-house. I do recommend a motion to take official action on rejecting the bid. And if, if the board is acceptable with Stash's recommendation, you know, then that's the direction we're going to go. You don't have to take a vote on that, but if you're fine with that, that's next steps. Is simultaneously issue some RFPs for concrete and building and see if we can meet the timeframe, as Mr., as the chairman stated, trying to get concrete by October.
So that'd be two RFPs, then one for the building, one for the concrete.
Basically, it's going to piecemeal.
Chairman, I just got, I'm just looking at the different shops I've seen of that kind of scale. Where they, you know, most of the building does not have a slab floor, it has gravel where the equipment is parked. I mean, is that doable for us, or would it just be part of the building is slab?
I know the barns you're talking about, Jim, I mean, we've all seen them. I think on something like this, and Jerry, in his most creative way, was pouring concrete basically on top of dust and old, old, old gravel in that facility to be able to do routine maintenance on stuff. I think if we go with this type of structure and then on top with a four to six inch slab, it's something that's going to last for a long, long, long time. I think if we don't do the concrete, it's something that'll come back and bite us down the road. And I know it's an A increase cost across the board, but looking at this as a building that'll be there for, oh heck, 50 years and hopefully certainly outlive all of us, I think that's something, might as well just invest the money into it and make it good now.
And remind me, Jonathan, what is the, we got, how much insurance money and how much can be set aside in the budget for this?
So, we had a total of $101,000. A thousand of it had to be used for deductible, so we had 100. And then we used some of that funding for the initial drawings and RFP work. You did not set a total budget in your CIP for this. We have a strategy for that. We believe there's some funds that will be positive on some other projects that are coming to completion. Still need to bring you a budget, you know, recommendation at some point, but it was not planted in that CIP.
I think everybody's understood, this thing's going to cost us $250,000. We are very, very close to that at this point. If we're working off the numbers of $180,000 on the install and building and then $100,000 on concrete, then that's, it is, that's just what it is. Other comments? Got anything? We do need to, who would like to take pride in rejecting the TAFT bid?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Pass along the thanks to her. All right, fireworks permits. We've got several of them. We've got Camp Shenandoah Springs and we've got Madison County High School Football. Those seemed to go off without a hitch last year. Hopefully we'll do it again the same way this year, is that right?
Yeah, the only thing that takes priority, we know we dealt with this, I don't want to jinx it. Usually something occurs around Wilbury Forest's alumni game, but unless there's a burn ban or something instituted, there should be no issues with these.
What would you like to do on these two fireworks permits?
Chairman, I need to approve the fireworks permits for Camp Shenandoah Springs and Madison County High School Football season.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign.
So I'd like to ask Brian, so Brian, where are we with dry conditions right now?
In July, we were really good. I think we were negative 100 on KBDI. Right now, we're around 400. It has dried out significantly in August. We are still about 100 to 200 points in the green from where we were most August. And we're about 400 plus where we were two, two years ago. So, right, right now, it's, it's not super damp, but it's not super dry.
It feels like it.
I know.
All right, anybody, anybody else on that? I don't know. All right, Miss Wickley, tell us about Virginia Energy Grant.
Yes, sir. Actually, I learned about this grant, Virginia Energy called me. Apparently, there was a grant application that began in November of 2024. This is an energy efficiency conservation block grant that the state has provided. Essentially, what they have told me is that the, now, we did say, go ahead and apply for it. There's been nothing signed off. Madison County, if they choose to move forward, there's a little over $66,000. As the program was described by me, Virginia Energy would partner with a company called EverBlue. And they do the solicitation of individuals to train as well as solicitation of residents to participate. This would be for energy auditing. So the idea is to solicit and select three local residents, gives them a skill set. I don't know the market on energy auditors, but it does give a skill set. And then in turn, the company would solicit Madisonians to participate. They would look at things such as obviously energy efficiency, whether it's lights or windows or things within the home, to educate homeowners in the overall goal to conserve energy across the grid as well as hopefully save some dollars for each of the ratepayers. We're all ratepayers and we know the cost of energy is up. This is a reimbursable grant, so any monies the county puts out will be reimbursed through this grant. I think I also asked him to amend, PEC, Pima Environmental Council, had some feedback on it as well. It looks like they were pro. I did speak to my counterpart in Green County, because they are a part of this as well. Just to see their understanding, it's similar, it's the same thing. And actually, I agree with her. The reason why I said, sure, let's see if the board likes to move forward. It's literally a turnkey that the county doesn't have to do the solicitation. But Madisonians get the benefit either if you are the one being trained or the one getting the energy audit for free at your home during that trial period, of course. So I stand by for, for any questions.
Do you have questions? Do you want to proceed with this? What would y'all like to do?
I've got, I've got one. So if, still, okay, they would like to, they would solicit three people, right? But there's 66 grand coming to us. That's $22,000 per person. Operationally, who, who are you going to find, I mean, to, to do, you know, to audit? How, how much auditing are they going to do for $22,000? You know what I'm saying? Yeah.
I can do a lot of auditing.
I mean, like the Skyline, we could, huh? No, you're going to, you're going to pay me 22 grand and I'm going to charge you, you know, what?
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-five dollars an hour, $30 an hour, how far does that go? What can you get done?
So the, the, the budget is, is, is in there. Most of the monies is going through the training provider. So I, I don't know how many homeowners, sir, that they will be able to serve to do the energy auditing for.
Yeah.
But there's a breakdown in there. They have a program manager, that's $980 of the overall. The training provider, that's the third party for $50,640, so that's the bulk of it. And then you have the equipment that is used in that energy auditing. So the homeowner will have no cost for this trial period, but that's how that 66, one, was it 180? It's broken down as in those categories.
That answered your question, didn't it?
Oh, yeah, I got that.
So it's the trainer and the equipment is the bulk of it.
Right. Well, I mean, if you could target, somehow target income-eligible households to see what kind of, so they could go in, Jim, and, and you could say, okay, you know, their windows are leaking like crazy. Call Skyline and get some emergency home repair, you know, going, or something like that. I mean, that's just, so I, I mean, it can't hurt, but.
Something's missing from there. I have to figure out, so, do people, are they employees of, who are they employees of? Are they independent contractors?
So this would be a, yeah, this subcontract would be, so they're compensated through this grant. But they would be a subcontract under Virginia Energy, so it would be agreement between us and them. But the subcontract would be through Virginia Energy to EverBlue.
So we would not be responsible for like any employee that does that, sir?
No, no, sir. No, sir, we're just have to, so we expend funds and we reimbursed it for what's expended. So we will send an invoice to them on what's expended. So what they have here, like their equipment costs, will, you know, we'll have to procure that, or they will do that. We will be reimbursed for that portion. So the county will not, other than saying, yes, we'd like to participate because it gives them opportunity in, in the locality. And we can certainly, I'll mention this in my follow-up to Ms. Green with Virginia Energy to say, hey, you should follow up with agencies or departments such as DSS and Skyline CAP for maybe some, some clientele or some recommendations, or as a resource for, because that was something I think I may have said to the chair before the meeting started. It's great, you can tell me my windows are terrible and my lighting, but I can't afford it. So how do I fix that to get the energy efficiency? That's where Skyline and others can come in, so.
It's not like the county would have to give these folks 1099s at the end of this?
No.
Okay.
No.
So EverBlue would be handling all that?
Right.
Yeah, to just to move the money.
And it would, it would establish a, a project or, or cost center, if you will, for this.
I'd like to beat this to death, but it's still, so let's just say hypothetically, I wanted to do this, but I'd rather be having to do this. But let's suppose I wanted to do this, so I come into the program and I get framed out. How am I compensated? By whom and by, right, I mean, it's.
So as far as the person performing the audit, it, it's not a compensation for that. The idea is they're giving you the skill set to learn how to be an energy auditor. Correct. Correct. You get certified. Again, I don't know the market for that, if there's a high demand for energy auditors. Hopefully there is, hopefully there's three local people, if you so choose, more for it, that will maybe have employment or side employment opportunities, if you will. But no payment for this. You're obtaining the skill set is your payment, if you will.
Well, the, the fact that this funding is still available under the current administration, somebody down there must think there's some value to this.
Is that a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'd say.
There you go.
We, we participate. I move that we participate.
Hot dog.
All right, motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. There's going to be a quiz on this at the end of this meeting. All right, discussion. Got an email the other day from someone with VACO. They're having a meeting at Woodstock Brew House, September 18th, from 3 to 5. Jim and Jonathan are representatives to VACO. I asked Cardy, as an exhibit, to Jonathan earlier, and anybody can answer this, is what are our legislative priorities? And Cardy and Jonathan and I, we all had the same one, is the leave zoning is a local matter and not a state matter. And I think everybody up here would sympathize with. Other than that, not a whole lot.
We can tag on data centers.
Oh, I, I.
As far, as far as that.
And the S974 is, I think, everybody's priority.
A hundred percent. And that's, that's the one that we go. And then the other one that has potential to come back is the By Right Solar. And that didn't go through this last round, but it may come back again. And that certainly should be one of our priorities. I've asked, one, Jim, you have any interest in going to this meeting?
Yeah, I should.
All right. The, the other. There you go. The, the other one is, I've asked Jonathan to reach out to Eldon James to get what priorities we have been pushing. Like to bring this back to us on September 9th at our next regular meeting. Have a quick, quick discussion about it, so we can send Jim over the hill with some information on what we're, what we are pushing. Normally, it's a very light agenda from Madison, but if we're going to participate, we all should know what it is and it should certainly go to the public. And if anybody else has anything, please get it to us. Does that sound reasonable? That work?
So, I just, one comment, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, definitely good. So the regional, Rapid Hank Rapid Ann Regional Commission, that's who we're a member of, I guess that's PD9. The legislative issues from that side of the platform hasn't been developed yet, but certainly it gives us a jump start to have that conversation, as the chairman said, at your next meeting. And then hopefully that will carry forth to help put issues on that regional platform as well. So you, you've got a couple of opportunities coming up for that.
I mean, there's a bunch of counties, I was looking to see which counties, a whole lot of counties are going to be there. Should be educational, if nothing else. Give us a report on the backside of it, if you don't mind, Jim.
And Ms. Turner can work with you, Mr. Jewitt, on confirming that RSVP.
Anybody else have anything on that? All right, information and correspondence. Tilly, tell us about life insurance employee benefits. Excellent.
Good afternoon. All right, so I would like to enhance our employee benefits package by adding New York Life, Whole Life Insurance to the lineup. We already have life insurance, which is a component of VRS, is two times the employee's salary. And we also offer Minnesota Life, which is optional life insurance, when an employee can get up to eight times their salary with additional life insurance. Both are term life insurance. So if the employee leaves, it stays here. If they retire, then it dwindles down to about 25, 25% of their salary when they're left. And then also with the additional life insurance, if an employee doesn't enroll within the 30 days, then when they fill out the medical questions and things like that, then them and their spouses most likely get denied. So then we have New York Life Insurance, which is a whole life insurance. If an employee leaves or retires, it stays with them, they would just have to continue the premiums. It's guaranteed, guaranteed issue the first year, no physical exams or medical questions, no cost to the county, just employee contributions, so we can do a payroll deduction. Premiums are based on age and gender. Employees can get up to $200,000 of coverage and up to $100,000 for family. The coverage can be for spouse, domestic partners, children and grandchildren. New York Life Insurance offers three guarantees. Guaranteed premiums, the premium won't increase. Guaranteed death benefit, death benefit won't decrease. And guaranteed life, I'm sorry, guaranteed cash value. The policy builds cash value if the employee needs to access it. So we just need about 10 employees to sign up to offer that, and I think it would be a good addition.
All right, who has questions for Tilly? Please.
What, what percentage of county employees participate in the current, like, program?
Well, so all employees do have it with VRS.
Hopefully not in American.
Yeah, through VRS, and then we have an additional life insurance. And not many do the additional, because a lot of people get denied. So it's just a whole life insurance, so, that they can keep.
Because I had, I had some of the programs from VRS instead. And if you sell that for six months or a year, it's brought off.
Yeah, right.
Anybody else have any questions?
So, yeah, please. So this is employee-paid, no cost to the county?
Yes.
And this, is this pre-tax? If they signed up, they take, this would, they would pay for this with pre-tax dollars?
I believe so, but that's a question I can ask.
I mean, I'm, that's fine, but. Post? I mean, that's going to be a selling point if you're trying to, to.
It should be similar to like, like, say, the Aflac program, right? Is that post? Okay.
Some, some are, some are pre-tax, but some is.
Okay. So I, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know Mr. Wright's thoughts on this. I mean, I know it's not any cost to the employer. One of the reasons, because Tilly does such a great job, wanted to explain it to the board. So I don't know if a vote is necessary. I, I would maybe recommend just to allow it as the benefits package. Again, it's no cost to the employer, but it's definitely good to inform the board, get your direction before we move forward.
We got Tilly. Anybody else have anything? I do think we should do a motion on this in support of. Tilly, is there anything we're not asking that we should be? Tilly, is there anything we're not asking that we should be?
I don't think so.
All right, all right. What would you all like to do with this one? Adding New York Life as a coverage for life insurance.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we add the New York Life as an option to the employees' package.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, here, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tilly. All right, Jonathan, tell us about the American Legion sign.
Yes, sir.
Please, on the board.
Bring up the picture.
Yeah.
All right, if you can bring up the photo, and I'll walk through this. Show the actual sign, yeah, that's the rendition.
Yeah.
So, Albert Yow stopped by the other day.
Which, which, which one are they shooting for? They're shooting for the...
I believe, no, not the, not the Motel Six sign, yeah, we're not, we're not doing that, I mean, they leave the light on for you, but it's not that. That is the concept, I understand, yeah, probably shouldn't went there, Brian. So, this is what they're thinking, but go back to the picture of the RSA corner lot with the power poles, because I like to bring some relevance as far as location. First off, this is information to the board. Albert Yow dropped this off on behalf of the American Legion, was more of informative, but anything that flows to my office that has attention to the board, I bring it to you. So, really, if they proceed with this, Madison County will not be a party of, it's more for information, where they would like to locate it, is somewhere on the corner of that lot, somewhere I imagine behind that fire hydrant. That is RSA's lot, it's where the town, where the elevated water tank used to exist, so again, permission would have to be from RSA, I'm sure REC, there'd be a request, they're referencing this letter, if they're gonna get power, the town has permitting process when it comes to zoning and signs, and I would probably imagine VDOT is gonna have some say, too, because their original sign there on the left, you can see in the picture, there's an annual permit fee, that's paid to VDOT for that, to have that in the VDOT right away. So, again, the county would not be a part of it, but this is information to the board, since this came to my office, making you aware, so...
Who has comments on this, this fine sign?
You can go back to the proposed rendition of the sign, not that one, the following.
I'll have to talk to Albert.
All right, the one that come, go ahead, Judd.
Just a quick comment, why can't it be where the sign is now?
They don't want it there.
Better visibility over on this lot.
Okay. Who owns the land around that?
Bev Turner owns that piece that's to the left.
Okay, that's not in the VDOT right away, right?
It's, it's, it's VDOT, but it still would be his property, just an easement.
Just curious.
All right.
Good luck.
I was just gonna say it like this, I don't care about the location, I do think the sign looks exceedingly gaudy in the middle of town, especially in comparison to like the Reva Fire Station sign, that definitely makes me slow down every time I go by it. I would hope that they'll come up with something that won't be so intrusive in the middle of town, I mean, we all want to support the American Legion, their renovation they're doing is just great in every way, we're so glad to see it, their participation in every, every community event is great as well, all right, let's hope they come up with something a little less gaudy.
So, Mr. Chairman, what they, what they say they're gonna do in that first paragraph to the, like, second and third line, to the, this sign will display various, they just want to have it as messaging, so whether it's events there or upcoming events, I think they're just trying to draw attention to their location, but also all for a service of current events, so, again, no county action, it's more information, but want to make you aware, because it came to my office.
Sure, the town will be easygoing about it. Anybody else have any comments on this? Talk to Albert, please. All right, anything else on that? All right, let's talk about Pratt's Roundabout.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I did go to their town hall, Kim, go to this drawing, please. VDOT had a, I think it was on the nineteenth of August, they had a public meeting up at Rimback Barn, the reason why they generally like those venues, they can put up easels and different depictions of their project. So, this was the, the concept drawing that they currently have of this project, you can see what's kind of denoted in red, and it's kind of got a, an X pattern going to it, is the current slip lane, or the yield lane that goes behind the former State Farm Business location, and onto Fairground Road. So, this, I'm gonna say is proposed, so I'll use the terms assumptions, you can see that pretty much those existing buildings, apartments, we'll say, will be gone as part of this project, as the concept has shown. There's a little bit of the parking lot that's delineated now at the old Pratt Store, which is now the Flock, currently, that parking lot goes all the way down and meets the road, there's some delineation there, a lot of X curb and guttering, and also you're trying to channel traffic, not short-changed traffic, like cuts through there now during school hours. I did ask them the concern of the radius of the roundabout, you've probably been all around the state, and not all these are same, some of those, you do the Dukes of Hazzard jump over the middle, others you have large radius to turn, they did ensure me that, because I said, your regular traffic through there, other than pedestrian cars, are school buses, grain vehicles, like grain trucks, and cattle trucks, or, you know, at least fifty-three-foot trailers or something to that extent. They said for the buses, they can make that radius easily, it's construction for a forty-foot bus to go around, they said for tractor and trailers, that curbing is gonna be low-profile, so it'll allow those larger trucks to make that maneuver. As you can see, the stormwater pond is, right now is where the Village of, what is that, Pratt Sign, Village of Pratt Sign is located there, that's where they propose the storm pond to go. There was a couple of local residents there, when I was there, I was talking to the Brumball residents, I think they're two houses down from the, from the Flock, looks like some of that ditching, the existing ditching will be pulled in closer to their home, I think that resident had like a maple tree they're concerned with, you know, with the roots and all being disturbed, possibly killing that tree. The other concerns, and if you'll go to the detour, I'm gonna try to explain this, but I want to put this as part of your package again in September, because Ms. Shepherd would be here, and I really would like for her to speak to the BDOT project. There's a couple of detour options in there, there's an A, B, and C, so they wanted some feedback on that. A and B gives you kind of options of different times of the year to make these detours, I was told that none of this would be ongoing during school, so that'd be a question for Ms. Shepherd, I think, to explain further when she's here. Option C, if you go to that, Kim, that's a, what I would call a full closure, so, you know, I would imagine these options, members of the board will determine the length of the project, if you do a full closure, it probably speeds it up, I don't know how much. I did give them feedback, Supervisor Yow had posed a question, wanted to ask about, does this do anything with traffic at the end of two-thirty and twenty-nine? You know, could it be like a right-only turn? They said it was a very good suggestion, that would be part of this project, but certainly something of that nature would be a good candidate for a smart scale application. This would detour traffic, A and B, you would have a detour going to Gibbs Road at that time, and they're gonna have, you know, kind of rerouting around Fairground, so, again, primary focus should be on the concept drawing, I would hold your questions on detour until Ms. Shepherd gets here, because she's more apt to explain their detour plan than I am.
Focus on O'Neill's Road, based on option C, will be excited. Have we got anything on this?
What about slow traffic?
No, it's not going, uh, when it, when it's operational?
No, when it's in other construction.
They say they're not gonna interfere, they're gonna speed, they're gonna go speedy like normal, it's gonna take two months on to do it over the summer.
So, I would just, I definitely think it's a good idea, members of the board, to have Ms. Shepherd to go over this in detail when she's here, but there was probably, well, Chuck, I know you were there, there was probably maybe thirty people, I mean, I was there from like four-thirty to about five-forty, and it was maybe thirty people in total that went in and out, some just came and picked up the little brochure, some stayed and asked questions, but...
I think you probably know the answer, so that picture right there, if you're coming in on, from two-thirty, from orange, and you want to go down two-thirty once, with a tractor, a long tractor trailer, you gonna be able to get around that?
Yeah, it's not a problem.
Yeah? Okay.
Even real long trucks, all stretched out, it won't be that bad. This is, this is, this is one, my family and I were talking about over the weekend, this, this is one that I, I do think, I mean, we know about the twenty-million-dollar bridge that twenty people are gonna cross in twenty-fourty-five in Etlin, this I do think is a good project, this is something, we've been talking about it for years, constantly crashes there, constantly, if this can slow people down, and people can use the roundabout like, like it's intended, and not just like it's a four-way turn, it, it, this is a good project, and it will be an inconvenience on everybody, and that includes personal and business and everything, but this is one that, this has been needed, and this is a good application for it. Cardi brought up about, they talked about previously about the alignment with Gibbs Road, and utilizing Gibbs Road as kind of the, the throughway going down to, to twenty-nine, and that was talked about years ago, and there's a lot of sense that's made out of that, but obviously that is kind of gone by the wayside at this point, I don't know, this is, this is something that Madison, this is something that could be used, this is a good one, I like this one, I'm sure it's gonna cost us a trillion dollars or something, but that's what it is.
I think there's a project, some project estimation cost in here.
Eleven million? Shoot, that's a deal.
All right, go to page three-twenty-seven of our packet, Kim, so there, there's some anticipated schedule dates, and then the costs are on the left, and the dates are on the right.
That's just the engineering problem.
So, you got a total cost, they're saying eleven-point-six, and that's broken down in categories below it, and then your construction, they anticipate starting this in summer of twenty-twenty-eight, but there's milestones before that. Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I hate to put him on the spot, Mr. Henry's here from REC, I know there's poles in that area, I don't know if there's any comment from REC, Mr. Henry?
There's giant poles.
No, that's fine, I know that the large poles come through that intersection, is there any, have they discussed with REC, is there gonna be any relocation of those poles needed, or does this project avoid that? If you go back to that roundabout... Okay.
The first thing I thought of, but it's not my money, is you should be looking at that corner lot, if your substation, if your substation needs to grow, Chuck heard me telling that at the town hall, but if they haven't spoke to you about any pole relocations, hopefully they're avoiding that.
Oh, yeah, that pole, that pole, Yow's pole is right there on the corner, and I mean, it's, it's at like seven feet, or six feet in diameter or something?
It's back on that hill.
Certainly, it's gotta be, there's where the extra cost will go. Anybody else got anything on this?
I always upgrade that, oh, poles to two-thirty, maybe ones. One thing I learned today would surprise me, is that BDOT no longer does driveway coverage. I got a phone call from them, because I applied for a permit, I have to replace one, guy was really nice, but he told me to don't take this personally, but we don't do that anymore. I'm like, okay, well, I'll do it. But, you know, he said, and I said, do I need the permit? He says, no, nothing, just go ahead and dig it up.
Interesting, okay.
I think he sounded legitimate, he was awfully friendly, though, maybe he wants...
Yeah.
Maybe you dialed the wrong number.
Maybe I'll let you put your culvert in first, before I check on this.
Go ahead and help yourself, Jim.
It's not like you're on a busy road or anything, all right, anybody else got anything on this?
Again, I recommend asking her.
Please. Please, it looks like we've got a little bit of time on this, but when do you think about bringing her in, John?
Uh, she's coming, she usually comes the first business meeting of the month, right, Ms. Turner?
She comes quarterly, I am anticipating her to be at the September ninth.
Yes, ma'am. All right, can you ask her then? Good. I would, I would not ask about your culvert, I'll argue, Jim. All right, public comment, any public comment?
Yeah, that's the one.
Any public comment? Anybody watching us online, Federico? All right, thank y'all, we do have a closed session.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I moved that the board convene in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A one for personnel.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign.
Why do you...
You wouldn't understand that.
Oh, yeah, I guess you're right.